Some parking issues for winter and I think our development team will do that. People just need to come in and talk to our manager. He's really willing to work with us.
I'd like to make a few comments on here. I've gone by this place half a dozen times in the last few weeks and it's nice to see the quality of the work that's being done on the house. But my first reaction seeing it is that the lot is too small, it's too close to the neighbors, and I have some real concerns about it. I think that we have a very good couple that wants to be, that is part of our community and they're trying to figure out how to make their way. I just don't feel that this lot and this house is configured properly to house vacation rental and I have to say that I will be opposing it. I just want to reiterate how good of a job that these people have done fixing this place up and I'm glad to see it and I just don't feel that it's configured well enough for the neighborhood to run a vacation rental.
Yeah, your worship, as is my policy that has evolved, as our vacation rental policy has itself also changed a bit. If there's significant opposition from the neighbors, if they're writing letters, coming out to the meetings and expressing opposition, I can't support for the most part the application. And this is the case here. We've had a lot of neighbors with expressing direct concerns about this and so I'm not going to support it.
Councilor Solz.
Your worship, I'm Echo with my co-councilman, Sam. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Donovan has done a wonderful job in renovating a very old house. The houses in this neighborhood aren't very close together, so I'm concerned about noise. And as Councilor Orlando has stated, if the neighbors come out in opposition, obviously there's a concern. And the real concern isn't so much about change, it's about acceptance of what's going on in their neighborhood now. So I am willing to support this one.
Any other discussion on this motion? The motion is, this is only amount of dialogue you read at third time. All those in favor? Against? Motion is defeated. So no point in doing the next motion? We'll take a three-minute break. We're going to be going right into the next public hearing. For those that only wanted to stay for the first one, you're welcome, of course, to hang around before you can take this opportunity to... Counselor Scott. That's who we used to hear the air today. The opening statement pertaining to running public hearings is still valid for this public hearing. And again, we'd like to have the corporate officer confirm that all due process was followed according to law and regulations.
Yes, your worship, I had two public comments, one in opposition and then one with a response from the property developers.
Thank you. And I do have a speaker's list set up. I have a few people that have indicated they wish to speak at this public hearing, but again, after I go through the speaker's list, I will be going out to the public for a minimum of three times and there will be lots of opportunity for people to speak at this public hearing. Mr. Strachan, do you have any kind of presentation for this?
Ready, your worship.
So we have the applicant here and has indicated he wishes to speak, Gareth Jones.
Gareth Jones, 2950 Pumice Road, Russell. Thank you for giving this opportunity to speak. Over the last six months, I've got to know that building pretty well. I've spent quite a lot of time in the property and getting a feel for it. I've also had a number of discussions with various heritage experts across B.C. and I've had the privilege of spending some time with Kathy and learning about how this property was very much woven in and part of the heart of this community for the last hundred years. I've also had the privilege of meeting a number of people who attended the school there as well and have various vignettes about their time in the property. So I'm acutely aware of how important this property is to the urban community and how it's really important we look after this and regenerate this building. What I would say is that buildings like this, from my experience, can appear incredibly robust, bricks, mortar, concrete, many joists which are cut from trees when the first pioneers came here from over a hundred, a hundred-year-old trees. The reality is that buildings like this are very fragile and it's very easy for them to fall into disrepair and to start to move to the fringes of communities where they get boarded up and forgotten about. And people assume that because it's been there for the last hundred years, it'll be there for the next hundred years. Unfortunately, the reality of this is that they fall into disrepair and before long they're either being demolished or they're just collapsing on themselves. And I've seen this firsthand in a number of different communities. The way in which these properties are actually looked after is that they're lived in, they're looked after, and they're allowed to evolve with the community so they carry on having a good place and they can be a part of the tapestry of this community. I think we're very fortunate here in B.C. to have the Heritage Vitalization Agreement process, which allows us to change these properties and allow these properties to evolve and continue to be a vibrant part of the community. And so from my personal experience of renovating these properties, and my last property I renovated was an Edwardian property built in 1904, they have the ability to light and to drive you up the wall as you go through these processes. On the last property that I was privileged enough to renovate, we lifted up some of the floorboards and from the original builders back in 1904, we found the ice cream cones where they were eating ice cream earlier day in the floor. And then another area of the building that we were renovating, as we peeled back the carpets, we found newspapers from 1956 where the Suez Canal crisis was going on. And I think the thing that stuck for me with that was actually there was a job advert in there and it asked for a pretty young girl from a good family to be a typist in a firm solicitors. And I think that these properties, they're an opportunity for us to look back at our history and see a different world, something which we find very hard to relate to and something which I feel very passionate about. And I suppose in summary, what I'm trying to say is that I think it's vitally important that we live in these properties, we look after them, we allow them to evolve. I've spent a lot of time working partnership with the city, with various heritage vitalization experts, speaking to architects, engineers. And I think what we've got here is a proposal which meets both the needs of myself in order to guarantee that we have enough revenue to be able to bring this property back to life, but also meet the needs of the community in that we can keep this property a vibrant part of the community and very much at the heart of it and where we can still allow the public to have regular access to it. And ultimately, I just want to secure it for future generations.
Thank you. The next person that indicated they wish to speak is Chris McDonald.
Can we switch the order?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's Cam. Sorry, broke my neck.
You should do that look though.
Thanks, Councilor. My name's Cam Blod, 1151 McCall Road. Appreciate the opportunity to just express our concerns. I'm talking on behalf of the family of physicians that currently work in Revelstoke, at the Sulker Medical Clinic and also at the hospital. I think you're receipt of my letter at this point and hopefully you'll have the opportunity to review our concerns. Specifically, talking about the rezoning of the Mountain View School and the proposal for permanent use to include health service centers and clinics. Most people in the room are probably aware, but I'll reiterate it, all of the physicians at the Sulker Medical Clinic currently hold active hospital privilege at the Queen Victoria Hospital in Revelstoke. In addition to the obvious clinical services, we provide emergency on-call services, obstetrical on-call services, surgical services, that includes anesthesia and surgery. We have concerns about bringing new recruitment and retention as being always first and foremost in our mind, making sure that we're able to adequately service the needs of the community. And we have concerns about a proposed new clinic in town and what that might do to our ability to retain and recruit people into the future. Within our group and the work that we do at the hospital, the absolute core of that is our surgical services. So again, that includes anesthetists and G.P. surgeons. All of those physicians rely on regular work at our clinic to subsidize the work that they do at the hospital. We do not have the volume of our hospital to support full-time hospital surgeons or anesthetists and these guys rely on their practice, clinical practice to subsidize their needs. About six months ago, one of our physicians that does anesthesia decided to back away from her practice. One of our other physicians that does anesthesia announced his retirement and that left us in a real bind. We now had, in addition to their emergency call schedules, in addition to their obstetrical call commitments, in addition to their clinic work, we had four physicians doing all the 24/7 anesthesia calls, 24/7 surgical calls. It was going to be unsustainable. We were at a real, a point of real crisis, even though we talked about it at the hospital level within IHA, where there really, there's a real possibility that we would potentially lose surgical services in Revelstoke. We set out to, with IHA, with the hospital administration, we set out to aggressively recruit a number of new doctors and we've been very successful doing that. We brought four new people into the Sulker Medical Clinic that will be able to do, specifically brought them in because of their anesthesia skills. Three of them are, two of them have G.P. anesthesia skills, so they will be doing anesthesia at the hospital, participating in the anesthetic call. One of the other physicians has G.P. surgery skills, so he has the ability to do after-hours appendectomy and emergencies, areas sections. And all of these physicians are the ones that we call, if I'm working emergency in the middle and I have a difficult case, they're the ones that I call for help and backup. And so absolutely critical to have people with these skills in town for emergency obstetrics and surgical procedures to be doing. So we've done a good job bringing these guys in, but the reality is we actually are probably, in our opinion, over-service at this point from a clinical point of view. We really, one of the things that was very difficult for us bringing them in was to be able to promise to them that they would have adequate income, adequate viable family practice, to be able to see the number of people that they need to see to make it worth their time moving and uprooting and becoming to Revelstoke. This was all before we knew that there was any intention on or to bring any clinic into town. So... So, I mean, so we have real concerns that if there's a new clinic with new doctors, it might reduce the viability of these physicians' practices. With these particular physicians, it'll be very, very difficult to replace. And again, we're stuck in that situation where our surgical services won't be the best sustained in Revelstoke. And I think that's a very real possibility if that happens. Interestingly, you know, there is no, there is no body in B.C. that will say you can't set up clinic in Revelstoke, other than the community itself or the existing medical community. You know, College of Physicians and Surgeons, they care only about whether you're setting your clinic up according to current guidelines, as long as you're practicing good medicine. B.C.M.A. or the doctors at B.C., they're happy to support you and anyone that pays a membership fee will get that support. College of Physicians and Surgeons just is most concerned about your competence and whether or not you're keeping up with your continuing education credits. But nobody's going to stop you if you have a viable business case for starting a clinic in community. It's really a clinic, or community and local medical community decision. Interior Health Authority, in this particular case, when we recruited these new physicians, it was a sell to Interior Health. It wasn't easy to get these, get them to agree to increase their physician manpower plan to allow these physicians to come. We lobbied for it. We felt it was important for them to come. And we were successful getting IHA to agree. And what that means is IHA can control which physicians have privileges at the hospital, which physicians can work in the hospital, but they can't control who sets up a clinic in town. Anyone can do that. So, you know, any future clinics at this time, if there's new doctors that came into town, it's extremely unlikely, you know, perhaps Dr. McDonald can speak to this a little bit more, but it's extremely unlikely that they would be affiliated with the hospital services at this time. So there'd be no additive to the current surgical services, the emergency services, obstetrical services that are already happening in town. And there wouldn't be potential an impact on the existing medical practices, family practice, making it less viable for the vets that we brought into town. Speaking, I did just want to talk about this clinic in particular. It's clear that they would like to, if the rezoning goes ahead as proposed, it's clear that they would like to get the medical clinic going as quickly as possible, as soon as possible, and bring new physicians in. And their intentions are pretty clear too. And I have a copy of the letter that was sent to me to B.C. recruiting, and they're looking to recruit five, potentially five new family doctors to Revelstoke. And again, these would be physicians that wouldn't have hospital privileges or affiliated with a hospital in any way. And we have real concerns about how that will impact our ability to retain our current physicians. And down the road, should our surgical services program expand, which I'm hoping it will, or as the population grows, our need may be at the hospital level, but if we have all these other physicians without extra skills, without participating in the larger hospital picture, it's difficult to know how we're going to be able to recruit at that time. And that's probably all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris McDonald.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Chris McDonald, 706 McKenzie Avenue. Been the chief of staff of the current hospital for extending news and then practicing full-service foundation position with hospital privileges here for 17. I think Cam Blod has done a good job in expressing the concern. Obviously, the concern that we have regarding the rezoning is not the revitalization of foreign heritage building downtown. At first, knowing a heritage home downtown, I've been through a renovation project and understand where the developers coming from. The clinic is currently housed in two more important heritage buildings in the corner of First and McKenzie. And we'd like to see Mountain View School become revitalized, Dr. Trish O'Leary, Dr. O'Leary, that school. And I'd love to see that building stay. I think Cam's done a good job in just expressing the concern we have as a medical community in the impact of a standalone, non-hospital-affiliated medical clinic that has a number of physicians that wouldn't be providing the full-service family, rural family physician practice, so we try to provide it at Queen Victoria Hospital. If you're not aware, Interior Health does control the number of physicians that practice in institutions when you have privileges with something called a physician control number. That is part of what we call their strategic manpower plan, control sites within Interior Health. We are currently at an FTE, fourteen, and some of those are shared practices, but each one of those FTEs is affiliated with the hospital for a specific role. As Ken said, if you're new, diligent, and intentional in trying to recruit physicians that maintain the core services, and for those of you people that live here or travel through, really that's strong with obstetrical services. If you don't have the people that are in the medical community, whether they're housed in Sulker Medical Group or somewhere else to sustain those services, there is a certain, there is a risk involved in that, right? Recruitment, like Ken has said, for physicians to a town like this really needs to be more in which they come for a viable livelihood, a burden of call. They all have done, Jones, I'm sure, are recognizable, 365, 24 hours a day. There's a real burden to that, right? But there's not to come really associated with that from a physician perspective. So there needs to be a viable family practice to house those physicians in. We're a town of about 8,000. I haven't seen us necessarily grow. I'm not sure what the census is now. We've been about that since I came here. We were two of six physicians when I came here. There's one, one woman retired and that would be retired. We've grown to 14 FTEs with some additional numbers to that. And like Ken has said, we recruited people very intentionally to maintain the complement of what the town needs to have a viable hospital, right? The concern is not so much with the development or even with the physician involved. Fortunately, and potentially after today, we'll have a better conversation. This is the first time I've seen the method developer, the current physicians in Revelstoke through the local community, is there are no contact from, questions asked of, or any discussion with what the manpower plan is or what the future services in Revelstoke could look like. We see ourselves in a pretty vibrant collegial team all across the spectrum of the people that provide medical services in Revelstoke, not just the physicians with the different staff. EMS, so I'm doing away. So we think it's just important that the council is aware, and maybe zoning is not the way to do this, to be aware of what the implications could be of a non-hospital-affiliated walk-in or a practice clinic that doesn't provide services to the hospital, that doesn't provide additional support to the full spectrum of what a crematory hospital is trying to do. What that's Revelstoke could do as far as our future ability to maintain services. We think about it a lot and I think Dr. Haynes is going to have a quick discussion to go to work. We're going as far as our surgical program, so you can understand the need to maintain some open ability to practice for physicians in Revelstoke. We'd like to see this community evolve in such a way that it could prove that there is another medical community and a medical clinic. We certainly don't think that we can house all the physicians that are working in Revelstoke at SMG. That has been something that's just happened over the course of the years because of the way that the town has grown. I'm sure it has some detriments, but also has a lot of positives. And we're probably one of the few places in B.C. we could come in and move to family, get a family physician. Sulker Medical is not training in any way. Partly it's because there isn't competition or something else for them to go. Anyone in Revelstoke who wants a family physician can have a family physician. But we've also tried to listen to what the Mayor's Committee on Health has asked for and feedback from people, potential Zaker assesses sent to us. We're trying to expand our walk-in or after-hours practice and trying to service not just the need of the resident local population, but the travelers, the people that come through town. So whether this is the place or not, we certainly would like to have it written to the record that concerns that the physicians in Revelstoke have regarding new clinics. Not so much the financial competition, it's more the ability to recruit in the long term and maintain the services that I think most of you have the use of, hopefully got some benefit out of, or certainly enjoyed the access to over the years. You can find on record, a lot of small towns where things have gone a different direction with multiple clinics. One says no because there's another one, you know, that says no, people can't get a family doctor or who provide after-hours walk-in clinic, but no after-hour service otherwise and don't support the hospital in places where the hospital emergency departments are closed, but there's actually physicians in town who won't work there. There's a language around competency and currency that we use in medicine. You need to be competent, you need to be current. We need to keep our, like, local physicians busy at the hospital doing things so that when bad things come, they're competent to do what they need to do. But we need to make sure we support these physicians that they're around and that they can end up by earning income to maintain that service. And that's the logistic kind of our concern regarding the inclusion of medical clinic and revitalization of this heritage building. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Vicki Haynes.
Hi, Vicki Haynes. I'm one of the GPs with the surgical skills that was recruited to Revelstoke to be physical and have, really enjoy my practice here. I won't add much. Chris and Cam have really outlined our concerns with a new medical clinic quite succinctly. And just to be quite clear, in knowing, do we oppose the development of this beautiful heritage building? I think it's a very interesting proposal that Mr. Jones and his wife, Dr. Jones, have put forward, but specifically zoning for addition of a medical service within that project is what we would ask for very, very, very careful consideration as per Chris's concerns. I sit on a provincial body that includes some very, very high-level organizations, including the Ministry of Health, the health regions around the province, the doctors in B.C., the divisions of family practice, the Joint Standing Committee of Rural and Surgical Issues, and highly engaged in the exciting proposal actually to improve and expand the type of rural and obstetrical services that are offered in Revelstoke. And there's a lot of engagement around coming proposals and money from Ministry of Health supporting what we do already have here. And our wish is that any further development of medical services in our community is done in a collaborative way, collaboratively with the current medical practitioners, our hospital services, and the larger body of healthcare in B.C. And unfortunately, to date so far, we haven't been engaged in any concentration for healthcare in the community by the developer or his wife, who is a physician. And we would invite that and have certainly lots of perspective to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Any college of questions from the council on that matter? The floor is open to the public for any comments on this Mountain View School property.
Hello, David Evans, 3669 Cathwood Road. It's usually me on the other side. I just listened to the three documents here. It seems the onus has been put on Mr. Jones, who contacted them. I don't know how the medical situation works here or how the doctors or all the bits about the hospital and retention, but his plan has been in the public domain for six, three, six months. I don't understand why they haven't reached out to him before now and why the objection comes in the day before. His plan has been there. It seems rather similar to all of the sort of rezoning applications that have come across this council in the last year, where the groups involved object if it's a business that they feel can impact their business, which I don't think is the way we should be doing this in Revelstoke. I think the doctors could have reached out before then and could have avoided this. So I think we should look at the zoning and not the business that's been done. That's it.
The floor is open to any comments from the public.
I'll just try and address your concerns. They're entirely valid. You know, when we first heard of this, the first we heard was in the newspaper when we saw articles. I think it was in, you know, all three articles. Subsequently, we got a letter, and this was not too long ago, we got a letter from... At that time, we struggled. We talked about it in meetings and we weren't sure how to approach it. We weren't sure whether to engage the city. You know, there's a history in rural family practice. I've practiced in multiple other communities. And there's an ethic in medicine and there's a history in medicine. I don't think any of us, certainly none of the colleagues I've had in this community or any other rural community have ever approached this as a business first. It's always been, I mean, obviously, a team of adult practice. But we've approached this in a, we approach this as a team and we want to collaborate and pitch in, okay, in the best way that we can. And in my experience, I've never experienced, none of us had, I don't think, experienced the position proposing a new private clinic in the town that hadn't approached... You know, my first phone call when I moved to Revelstoke was to the clinic here to see if the renovation thing is available. If that clinic hadn't existed over number three or four, I probably would have called the hospital and talked to whoever the chief of staff was that we looked after, sort of the medical staff at that time. There was no effort there being made. At the same time, we did receive from a person that had done local stuff for us in the past, a letter stating, and this was the letter that had been sent to B.C. saying that they were recruiting. They already had one successful applicant to the practice. They had, hoping for two more, hoping for two more after that. Fully funded, fully staffed, ready to go. This was prior to any communication with certainly anyone at a local medical level. And we weren't, to be quite honest, we really weren't sure how to approach that. I don't have a lot of experience in these areas and it was new to all of us. It was really only in the last week that we were aware of a public hearing. And that's our own fault. I mean, these are announced and... Probably should, you know, your suggestion to get our complaints in earlier is something that in hindsight, probably we shouldn't have done. But it certainly wasn't our intention to sort of wait until the last minute intentionally and put Mr. Jones in a hard spot in terms of being able to reply to our concerns. Thank you.
I guess the only comment I'd like to make on that is that we're in a public hearing process and people can walk up to the microphone and they can make any comment that they want as it pertains to the process that we're in. You know, it's, it's always good for a proponent to reach out to the neighbors or whoever may be affected, but that's up to the proponent to decide that. It's up to the public to decide how they were affected by the rezoning application and to make their views known. So I, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody because this is the way the process unfolds. So I'm not pointing fingers at anybody because this is the way the process unfolds. And the stage aren't right now. The microphone is open. I'm looking for any comments on this Mountain View School property with the heritage revitalization and the zoning. Microphone is open for the public. Any comments or questions from councilman? Mr. Jones, you have the microphone if you would like.
I'll be very, very brief. I just want to come back to really the heritage revitalization agreement itself is the, we're kind of drawn into the business aspects of it, which I think is slightly incorrect because this is about this property and trying to regenerate this property. And what we're asking for is something which is commensurate with a myriad of other properties across the whole of this town. So this is not something which is specific to this property, what we've discussed, and what seems to be getting discussed is actually a wider issue that sits across probably hundreds of properties across this town. And therefore, I'd say that from my perspective, what I'm trying to do is trying to maximize the opportunity to actually redevelop this property and bring it up in line with a number of other properties across this community.
Well, and I guess the point that I slightly disagree is that we're adding a use to the site as part of the process that we're in, which is the medical part yet. And if council decides that it has a real concern, it could approve everything and not put that part in unless I stand corrected.
Your worship, council could choose to do that?
Yeah. So it is part and parcel of the public hearing process, and if somebody from the public is coming to the microphone and sees it's important and council agrees, that's the process that we're in. Mr. Shabro.
Your worship, council does have the opportunity to change the use after a public hearing by eliminating the use, provided the owner consents. In the absence of that consent, the council has the opportunity to not support the bylaw. Just with respect to the public hearing, I myself was having some trouble connecting a lot of the comment made to the question before council, which is one of land use. The purpose of a public hearing is to hear persons' comments with respect to the bylaws that they feel has an effect on their interest in land. And while we're all concerned about the viability of hospital and surgical services in the community, I want council to think about the comments are supposed to be more towards land use as opposed to the viability of a particular institution or businesses. But they can be connected.
Councilor Lewis.
Your worship, if I could just ask a question of Mr. Strachan. If someone wanted to come in to the community and open up a clinic somewhere else, are there options to open up clinics anywhere else in the community, or do they have to get permission to open up a medical clinic?
There is currently 268 properties in C1 zone, which allows for medical services. Also, every residential property within the city allows a whole lot of H2, which allows a physician to operate out of their house. So they have a bulk of genetic properties and can, to a degree, have medical services.
So C1, which is a commercial zone, just standard commercial zoning allows for medical space or whatever?
Yes. Currently have 267 properties that have that zoning. Thank you.
Councilor Monroe. Your worship, I do have a question of staff. Does anything within our current planning documents, be it the OCP or sustainability plan, refer to the issues that have been placed in front of us regarding, for example, hospital staff and that kind of thing? Do we have any existing documents speaking about how we're going to be guided as a community towards on these types of issues?
Mr. Strachan.
Your worship, at this time, our section of the OCP is quickly on health and how that's going to be working into the city's bylaws. Yesterday, we had the meeting with the health community committee to talk about the OCP review, a new section of the annual OCP vote, community health, and talking with these types of issues. I wouldn't expect that the OCP policy would get to this level of detail. There's a regional authority that deals with that group, one of them. But supporting it through that OCP process, where we include a number of health people in that committee, and as well as probably engaging the rest of the community in that process, hopefully we'll bring more of that into our bylaws for the future. At this point, it's very oriented towards monthly statements, more the city continues to support health communities. Very general, hopefully we can make that a more robust. And the reason we went to that committee is to talk about having a more robust section of the OCP around health.
Looking for any comments or questions from council. Councils.
Your worship, I guess I have a severe concern about physicians in our community and basically their fundamental care for the quality of life for all the community. And I need to see the healthcare relative as we now know it, physicians are only able to provide for their own families. But I wonder, from a council perspective, what the ramifications would be if we were to say, we'll allow you to put in C1, but we're also going to pull out certain sections of that C1. I get concerned about that. As Mr. Shabro has mentioned, the issue before us today is one of zoning. And the C1 zone includes the use of a medical clinic. I would hate to see Mr. Jones' project come forward and a clinic start that didn't work with the other people, and then all of a sudden, our healthcare in a year or two or three is a rate where we don't have the ability to support the physicians we need to care for those in our community. So the conundrum that's been put before us is, how do we mitigate that problem? And can we? And then the issue comes back to what I already said. Before us, it's a zoning issue today. So I'm just asking if there's any other council members that would have anything but towards that.
Well, I know, speaking to a lot of other communities in B.C., mayors and councilors, that they really look at how Redelstoke has been so successful in attracting the level of doctors of the medical profession and the level of care that we get in this community. A lot of them are trying to figure out how they could do the same thing. I thought we were just coming here today to talk about fixing up a heritage building and saving it, and that's not always the case. But when you look at, if we were to approve this and pull out the medical part of the C1 zone, and Mr. Jones still decided to go ahead and fix up the building, his wife could just rent a space downtown, could take half of their house, so they could set up a medical clinic if they wanted to. So we're not really solving anything by excluding the use that is enjoyed with every other C1 zone property in the community. And that's the problem that I see, is that we're trying to take away something in this property, or we're contemplating taking away something in this property that is available in every other C1 zone property. And unless I have that wrong.
That's correct, your worship. If council were to approve this bylaw, there'd be 268 properties instead of 267.
Right, okay. I'm going to go back over to the public for a second time for any comments from the public.
Just quickly, I want to comment that that's absolutely correct, and we appreciate the opportunity, as a first time, as a group of physicians caring for the community, to share our concerns about the impact of manpower and recruiting in our town without a full collaborative process that involves all stakeholders, physicians, the health region, the ministry of health. We recognize that this is a zoning issue, and that we're kind of talking about something a little bit different, and that if the zoning goes ahead, it doesn't solve our concern. So that's what we appreciate it, and we will continue engaging on our medical services in whatever form this develops and any other physician with capacity takes form in the coming months.
Thank you. Mr. Jones. Just one final comment, which is that the long-term plan is to get to five physicians, hopefully, because that's what the bill needs to say, and that is not something we're looking to rush towards at all. We're trying to just recruit one physician to start with, and it's no advantage to us, and it's definitely an advantage to the current physicians in town for us to try and flood the place full of physicians. I mean, all I'm doing is taking a round of my shotgun to my own foot, and definitely to my colleagues in town here. So there's no aspiration for that, definitely look towards collegiality wherever possible. This also has to be seen in the context of this town growing in the next 15 to 20 years. We're talking about a number of new homes that have been built here, we're talking about 4,000 people potentially moving to this area in the next 15 years. And so the requirement's only going to grow over the next decade, and this is a case of just putting a seed down at this stage and making sure that we've got the condition set, that this is part of that longer-term strategy. So I just want to relay concerns if you think there's some of the higher levels of physicians. If only we could, I mean, in B.C., for example, there's a shortage of doctors, so we talked about recruiting, how difficult that is. So it's definitely not an aspiration. This is a long-term strategy.
Thank you. Councils. Could I ask Mr. Jones a question?
Absolutely. Mr. Jones, in your statement that you're supporting to bring in and have one physician, is that one physician your wife to start?
No, not to start with her.
Okay. Will your wife be working in addition to that one physician?
No, no. She's currently got practice in San Ana, and as such, she's planned to stay there.
Thank you.
Going back over to the public for any comments on this public hearing for the Mountain View School property. For a third and final time, is there any comments on this public hearing for the Mountain View School property? Looking for a motion to close this public hearing. Counselor Duke, Counselor English, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Motion number two, the zoning amendment by law 2149, you read it a third time.
Isn't it 2158? 2158.
No, sorry. 2158, you read it a third time.
Motion, Counselor Duke, sorry, everybody, council makes some discussion on the motion? Counselor Lewis.
I just would like to say, I really appreciate the fact that the Suffolk Medical Community or clinic has come forward. I think this information is really important for the city. It's the first time that I've sort of understood and heard the concerns and how hard they do work. I mean, we're so lucky that we have this clinic in the community, and so I really appreciate of the fact that they brought that to our attention. And I think going forward, if the city can be of any assistance in helping with those concerns, you know, I hope they bring them forward to city council. But, you know, I'm mindful of the fact that this is a zoning matter, and we're required as a council to deal with as a zoning and land use matter. And so, you know, to pay heed to the comments that have been made by the doctors, I'm going to have to say that I support this motion, and that's what I'm going to do.
And I would also like to encourage Mr. Jones to meet with the Suffolk Medical Group and start building a relationship on how we can ensure that the quality of medical care that we've experienced over the years is going to continue. Because I am concerned, but I as well am going to vote in favor of this motion. Counselor Nixon.
Your worship, you and Counselor Saltz and myself met with IHA in the spring and supported the doctors' plans to increase the surgical services at QBH, and kudos to you doctors for doing that. I think that your surgical plans are going to grow, and you're working at a provincial level, that's great to hear. And when we talk about health in our plans, the ICSP, the Integrated Sustainability Plan, which is, you have to integrate, talks about the high priorities from 2012, and they're all being moved on. Council supportive of the helipad, council applauds the increased hours at Suffolk Medical Clinic. The Mental Health Integrated Working Group is a great step forward, particularly for youth in our community. And just, I remember Dr. Cam Mulder trying to cover surgery by himself, and Dr. McKnight retired, and Dr. McKnight would come back, return, to give him some relief. And I know and I witnessed the amount of hours that the local group puts in in their clinical practice. I too am going to support this land rezoning. The zoning bylaw's been around since 1974, and those 200-plus pieces of land have been available for health clinics since 1974, so I'm going to hold in spirit.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Counselor Saltz.
Your worship, I'll echo what my councilor's stated. This is a zoning issue before us. I definitely had a chance to speak with the physicians about this and having read their letters, quite concerned over things going forward. And as you said, I do encourage Mr. Jones as well to reach out to the medical community to see if they can be collegial in how their plan goes forward. I will also support the rezoning of this property, but I am really quite concerned about healthcare going forward in the future. I've seen many communities where they've had to have the city council go forward and state, we need to bring physicians in. We're very fortunate, we have doctors in this community, and I want to be one of the first ones to say, I want to be able to keep those physicians here, keep them working, and we very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Any more comments on this motion? Counselor Monroe.
Your worship, I think like the other councillors have expressed that this is a zoning issue and a land use issue, if I thought that we could make medical services better by, with our decision either way, I would think about that at this point. What we're looking at is a zoning decision on this property, and as has been mentioned, anyone could build a clinic or establish a clinic anywhere else. And we actually have had another zoning application several months ago for health services at the highway, if you do recall. So it seems to be maybe this is something that people are seeing a business opportunity at. You know, I've had the opportunity to read the letter that was submitted by Suffolk Medical Clinic, as well as to hear the submissions that were made here today. However, you know, that's just a small understanding for me on how this whole thing works. And I really think that, like other councillors have acknowledged, we do have good medical services here, and we don't want to upset the apple cart. And we would like to, at least myself, and I'm sure everyone else on council would like to engage to find out how we could continue to have, enjoy the luxuries that we do enjoy. And I think some opportunities include, you know, I'm not on the health advisory committee, but some more opportunities for the A's in there. As Mr. Strachan has said, we are heading into an OCP review, so if this is something that could be engaged with at that level, as Mr. Strachan said earlier, there's an opportunity to make it more robust or be more detailed, and again, that would be an exploration. And also, you know, to comment, and you know, I can't call it physicians who came up and made comments today, I think the comment from Dr. McDonald was, you know, this, talking about the spirit of collegiality, I'm sorry, I didn't, Dr. McLeod. But, you know, let's, I think there's opportunity to work forward and continue providing the good medical services with everyone involved. And I do have open mayor's statements earlier to that.
Motion's on the floor, zoning amendment by law 2158, you read it a third time. Is there any other discussion from council? Comments? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
I move that zoning heritage revitalization agreement by law 2159, you read it a third time.
Motion by Councilor Duke, sorry by Councilor English. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, motions carried. That is our public hearings, and we've taken three minutes break. We've almost made it through the first page of our agenda.